It is Tuesday, May 31st. The time is 9:34. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We'll have the invocation. We'll be led by Councilor J.T. Moore, and the pledge of allegiance is planned to be held by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you all please stand and join us. Thank you.
Bow your heads. Father God, we come before you today just thanking you for this new day, Father God, for that your mercies are new each morning, and so, God, we're thankful, we're grateful for your faithfulness. The word. Thank you, God, for just encouraging us today, God. There's a lot going on, and we know, Father God, that you are the lifter of our heads. You are our strong tower. You are our last resort, Father God. You are our first resort. You are our shield and our strength, Father God, and so, I just thank you, God, for helping us to guard our hearts and our minds from fear and anxiety during this time, God. Yeah, man, so many people are afraid to go to Walmart, to go to church, to go send their kids off to school, and I just thank you, Father God, because you said in your word that you didn't give us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind, sober thinking, sober thinking, sober thinking, God, and I thank you that this city, the people of this city, Father God, have sober thinking, that they move in power, Father God, that they move without a spirit of fear, but of love, Father God, and so, we just thank you for being here with us today. I thank you for each and every person that is in government and in the city, in this county, in this state. I thank you that we all work together to bring about your will in this earth, and I thank you, Father God, for the citizens who will benefit from it. We also just want to speak to our future, Father God, and proclaim that we will have a wonderful, safe event for the World Games, Father God, that each and every person that comes out is going to be able to enjoy themselves and just have a good time, Father God. We pray for our officers. Thank you that they are protected, Father God, and we just thank you for them, and so, we just praise your holy name. We bless you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and we thank you, Councilor Moore, for that prayer for our city and for our residents and for this council and mayor. Thank you very much.
Blessings, nice to...
And we thank you, Councilor Williams, for that salute to the flag. Good morning, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Woods.
Woods.
Council President Pro Tim Smithman.
Good morning.
Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you very much. The minutes are not ready from February 1st through May 24th, 2022. Good morning, Chief. Do we have any communications from the mayor?
Good morning, Madam President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, members of the public. Hopefully, everyone had a great Memorial Day weekend. There is no mayor's report today.
Wow, thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would read the items that are presented to us for consent.
Yes, ma'am. The consent agenda begins on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Page three, items five, six, and seven. Page four, item 10. Page five, items 11, 12, and 13. Page six, items 14 and 16. Page seven, items 17, 18, 19, and 20. Page eight, items 21, 22, 23, and 24. Page nine, items 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, and that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any items that you would like to have removed or added to the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am, Madam Pro Tim.
I would like to place item 15 on consent, and then I would like to take off items 10 and 12.
Okay, that's item 15 on page six that's been requested to be consented, and that was item 10 and...
12.
12. Item 10 on page four is being asked to be removed from consent, and item 12 on page five. Any other items, Counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott, good morning.
I would like to remove item 24, just to ask a question. It's on page eight.
Yes. Item 24 has been asked to be removed from consent. That's on page eight. Any other items? All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, and those are indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors can entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Vote has started.
I don't know. My iPad isn't up either.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. You have me on there, okay? All right. Everyone's voted. All right, thank you. Those items passes. All those items that have been considered as consent have been approved. If you're here for any of those items, your item has been approved, and we hope you have a great day. We'll continue now with the rest of the agenda.
The next item is item number eight. It's on page four. An ordinance pursuant to Alabama Act 1969-916 authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Birmingham and the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District to provide a law enforcement task force and community safety partnership related to HABD's high-intensity, community-oriented police patrol program at designated HABD properties for a period of up to two years with an end date of February 28th, 2024, unless terminated earlier by either party. HABD will provide funding to the city in the amount of $3,293,645.54 to cover personnel costs, expenses, and reimbursement for maintenance, fuel, and repair of vehicles. The city will provide up to 14 police officers, one sergeant, and one captain to perform law enforcement functions in the housing communities as part of the task force. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first.
Motion for UC.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right, thank you. This is item eight, and this is an interlocal agreement that is being considered between the Housing Authority and the city of Birmingham to provide law enforcement. Could we just have some information regarding this item? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. We have our chief accountability officer, Chief Melissa Smiley. She's available to answer any questions that the council may have or provide an overview if needed.
Good morning, Counselors.
Good morning.
This agreement is a longstanding arrangement between the city of Birmingham and the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District. What we're attempting to do here is to go into a new structure for the contract. Previously, the contract required that the city invoice HABD on a monthly basis. Under this new agreement, we will not have that responsibility. There will be a flat fee for the services provided by the city of Birmingham to HABD, and the purpose of this is to assist with keeping crime under control in our public housing communities.
All right, thank you. Counselors, do you have any questions regarding this item? I believe I see Madam Abbott.
Well, my question is, it's my understanding that we have a shortage of police officers, and we've had this high cops program for many, many years, as long as I can remember, but would it be time to look at letting them hire their own security force or something so that we can use our police officers to patrol our city? Just curious.
Counselor, HABD is interested in continuing the relationship with the city of Birmingham, and what, from what I've understood, that relationship has been effective in reducing crime, but we do have our police chief here. He can speak to how crime is being managed in the city if you want more detail on that, but I want you to know that HABD is interested in continuing to have the city of Birmingham provide these services because they think we've done so effectively.
Madam President?
Yes.
And Counselor, to the point, the mayor is in discussion with the HABD leadership and our chief of police to make certain there's a balance. While we do recognize we're recruiting officers, we also don't want it to tax the support we're providing to the city. So, I think the discussion would probably be better with the mayor and the council so that we can make sure you know that the services provided to the city are not being compromised because of the agreement and arrangement with HABD.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, but, you know, the question is regarding the fact that we have a shortage of police personnel, and we're dedicating a large chunk of people for the housing. I mean, I'm sure the Housing Authority is very happy, but that was my question was, is it going to compromise the rest of the city since we have a shortage of personnel?
So, the answer is no. That's what I mean. The conversations between HABD and BPD have been to make certain that it does not compromise the city. They've been having this discussion for a while, and that concern was taken into account, that we do have our residents that we have to police as well, or that we have to secure as well. So, no, it does not compromise, and the mayor and the HABD leadership have been pretty honest about making certain that whatever opportunities they can provide, they do, but it doesn't compromise the resources that we have in the city as we address our own needs. So, that's a discussion that I think it would probably be good for the mayor and the council to have together to reassure you.
I think you're right. That is a good conversation, Madam President, that we need to have with the mayor.
I agree. I know the mayor will be back, will be available later this week, so we would like to go ahead and entertain that conversation.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President.
We do have another question. Dr. O'Quinn.
First, just a comment on your question, Counselor Abbott. So, previously, the HABD was contracted with county, and just based on resident accounts, that didn't work out so well, and BPD ended up responding in almost all of those cases anyway, so, and we weren't getting paid for that, so, anyway, I think, you know, given the two options, I think this is a better arrangement, unless there's some third option. My question is related to just a more general question. So, in consideration of the budget, when we look at the BPD departmental budget, is this amount reflected in the allocation for BPD? So, what I'm saying is, is that when you look at the total allocation for BPD in the proposed budget, does that dollar value incorporate this funding? And then, and I'm also thinking about, you know, we receive a very considerable amount of federal support for our police department. Are those, when we have those types of agreement, those grants, those funding sources, is that amount also reflected in the departmental budget?
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Chief.
Counselor O'Quinn, basically, yes. The long answer, well, the short answer is yes, because those are interlocal revenues that we receive from HABD to offset those officer salaries. Now, to your second point about the federal fund, and we separate those funds because those are not general fund funds. Those are federal funds that we have to allocate in a separate fund to allocate, for like FTA has a certain amount of funding that they give us for patrol units at the airport authority.
Yeah, so, the next taking from that, in many of those cases, that funding is not something that we could potentially use for something else.
No, sir.
Right.
Because they're dedicated strictly for personnel.
So, is it accurate to say that there's many millions of dollars that are of that nature, that are non-negotiable, they're dedicated specifically for BPD in many instances?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Pro Tim. I'm sorry. Councilmore. All right.
Well, speaking to Counselor Abbott's point, this is very helpful, having a police presence, a positive police presence in the public housing. I know in particular, I have one or two in my district. It's the old Lovemans Village. I've heard from residents that crime has decreased since the new housing has opened, and we see a lot of times, unfortunately, quite a bit of our shootings come from these public housing units, and so, I think that helps us to kind of address crime a little bit more, because I know, like, Ellis and Village, sometimes we'll hear quite often there are quite a few shootings, so I think it's a good thing that we're doing this, especially with there being so much of a concentrated area of people, because we all know whether it's a concert or that, that's usually where crime and like a lot of shooting happens, so I'm really excited about this. I think it's important that we heal the relationship between the community and the police, because right now, I think over the last few years, there's been a lot of strife, and so, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, because in the agreement, it says they're going to recruit some residents to help give input into how the police can help to amend that relationship, what they can do better to patrol it, so thank you for this. I think this is a good thing.
Thank you, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. A few quick questions. The 3.293 million is, I know that says it's for a two-year agreement. Is that 3.2 per year, or is that for the two-year term? Is for the whole term? And then, how, and you said that the way that this differs from the last habbed agreement that we had is that this is just a flat fee, and then, and forgive me, we voted a long time on the last one, but I thought that that also was a flat fee that included different cost structures attached to it. Is it, was it not?
We, within this contract, there was a very elaborate structure to how our invoicing was done for HABD. There were some flat fee elements involved, but it required monthly having our finance team and our BPD officers who were involved go through an exercise to come up with invoices that were sent to HABD.
Okay, so, and how it differs, I'm still struggling to figure out how it was different from the one we did previously. Is the personnel number, like, in general? I have the agreement. I read it. I don't know, like, it kind of looked the same to me. So, it's different in just in invoicing capacity, not in the way that the policing's done or anything like that.
Say that one more time.
It's different in, I guess, you would say, in invoicing capacity, not the way that the policing is done or anything like that. Okay, I do have to ask, why do we have a captain assigned to that unit and no lieutenant?
Why a captain and not a lieutenant?
Yeah.
So, that's when we would need to bring Chief Thurman in. It's operational, so we can get Chief Thurman to talk about the allocation of resources, Counsel.
Good morning, Chief. Thank you.
How are y'all? Good morning, Chief. So, we've had a captain. Currently, we have a captain, one sergeant, and eight officers currently assigned to this program. It's been in effect for the last year without a contract. It just, it works well. We didn't, we didn't need a lieutenant in this particular position. Really, the captain position works out well, just the one sergeant is what we...
Okay, and then, the last contract was for $3.6 million, I think, was the difference. Is there a reason that the...
I know on this one, we took into consideration...
This officer was before your time, so, the 3.6, what's the difference? Why is there a difference between the two contracts?
Same number of officers, same number of hours, same number of units.
Okay.
Just a little bit more for us. I think we heard you, but...
Oh, I said that this figure was negotiated based upon the allocation of resources necessary to provide the services.
Okay. What, I guess, one question, a different, kind of switching gears a little bit, how much impact does the habbed board and habbed director have into what the operations are of this unit? How much impact does the habbed director and habbed board have on the operations of this unit? Because I know that that has been something over the past four years that has been a point of contention.
HABD director have on this? But I've observed, sir, the, over the last three months, I'll say, the current interim director has relied on the recommendations from their director of public safety and what BPD is willing to do.
Okay.
I don't know about the prior director, who's no longer there, but this current director is leaning on the expertise of the public safety folk.
Well, I guess that's, you know, that's the reason we got into having the county there, and we got into having different agencies there is because of the, you know, that was a big part of it, and so, I just wanted to see, I guess that's not really addressed in the contract, but it sounds like that they are relying on the, what BPD sees as best. Okay.
It is communication with HABD has been rather cooperative, I would say.
Okay.
We recognize there have been challenges, but of late, HABD...
Okay, great. Well, just as a personal aside, I think that this is a great program for a lot of reasons, namely, because if we do have a different security agency or law enforcement agency there, it's our officers that have to go take that IO or that report anyway, so we're kind of duplicating work. Are these guys actually taking the reports while they're in the 14 habbed complexes, or are they calling in a street unit to come take the report?
Yes, sir. So, those officers are handling any calls for service and things of that nature?
Yeah, I think that's the best for the taxpayer. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, I believe has a follow-up.
Yes, this is some tangentially related. So, HABD has talked about installing security cameras, additional security cameras in their Has that happened, and are those cameras tied into our real-time crime center?
Yes, sir. They have installed those. I think there's a significant number of those already. They are feeding into the real-time crime center, and if you remember back in October when the real-time crime center opened, we solved a homicide in the first couple of days in the housing community based on their camera system. So, yes, sir, it's helped out significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I just have one follow-up question. Does anybody else have anything? I just wanted to be sure that Dr. O'Quinn's initial question was answered regarding the 3.2 million. Is that reflective in, how it's reflective in the current proposed budget and how it will be costed out? Thank you.
That's great. It's reflective in the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Counselors? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that overview. At this time, then, Counselors, we're ready to call for the vote.
Vote has started.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Counselors. That item passes. Next item.
Next item is item number nine, also on page four. Ordinance to provide for a temporary suspension of construction and construction permitting activities around the World Games venues for the efficient traffic flow of traffic and the safety and security of the venues, infrastructure, citizens, and visitors.
All right, thank you very much. This item pertains to, we know the World Games is coming. I think we're less than 40 days, what are we, 37 days away? And so, this is to, for some of the safety, and I guess just for access and everything, the mayor has recommended this item. Could you tell us a little bit more about it?
Yes, Madam President. You pretty much hit it on the nail on the head. It is really just working with the local contractors and the downtown footprint to just temporarily haul, temporary pause to any construction so we can have and maintain the flow of access in and out of the footprint of the downtown area. That's the biggest portion of this temporary suspension is in the downtown footprint. We have talked in conjunction with PEP and BDOT to make sure that we have continued conversation with those contractors to make sure that they understand why we're doing this, and, you know, it's just a safety concern that we want to alleviate right now.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions regarding this item? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, and if I understand correctly, permits that are already active, you'll continue to service those, but no new permits during this time?
No new permits, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Abbott?
Yeah, and I noticed that all inspections were going to be suspended from, I think it was July 1st or June 30th. I mean, they were suspending inspections for a pretty long time, so even if you have an existing permit and you're doing work, you can't get an inspection.
So, we have permanently expected that we'll still do that effort. It's just it will be a reduced amount of time that they will be doing in the downtown footprint.
Okay, so, does the downtown footprint, that includes Avondale Park and UAB, or is this just...
Just downtown area.
Oh, okay, okay. I misunderstood. I thought it delineated all these other locations also.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the other venues, like the Avondale, there's not much construction that's going on around that venue. Or at Bessette still, so it's not really affecting that area. It's just the downtown area.
Okay, so, this isn't, this doesn't have anything to do with residential permits and all that? Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're ready for the vote. Thank you.
Vote has started.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I keep looking for nine, I'm sorry. Thank you all. That item passes. Next item.
Item is item number 10. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city of Birmingham to enter into an interlocal government joint services agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation, Jefferson County, Alabama, and the University of Alabama at Birmingham, for the public purpose of maintaining the landscaping along Birmingham area interstate...
So we have permanently expected that we'll still do that effort, it's just it will be a reduced amount of time that they will be doing in the downtown footprint.
Okay, so does the downtown footprint, that includes Avondale Park and U A B and, or is this just?
Just downtown area.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood, I thought it delineated all these other locations also.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the other venues, like the Avondale, there's not much construction that's going on around that venue, or at best it's still, so it's not really affecting that area, it's just the downtown area.
Okay, so this isn't, this doesn't have anything to do with residential permits and all that, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're ready for the vote, thank you.
Vote has started.
Yes.
Not fixed, Tom. All right, thank you, I keep looking for nine, I'm sorry, thank you all, that item passes, next item.
Item is item number 10. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city of Birmingham. To enter into an interlocal government joint services agreement with the state of Alabama. Acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation, Jefferson County, Alabama, and the University of Alabama at Birmingham. For the public purpose of maintaining the landscaping along Birmingham area interstates, highways, and on and off ramps. In the city of Birmingham for a period of three years and a total cost of $1,320,000 annually. Being divided equally among the parties requiring the city of Birmingham to provide $258,000 annually. For a total amount not to exceed $774,000.
All right, thank you, councilors, this resolution authorizes the mayor to execute this agreement with the state of Alabama, the Alabama Department of Transportation, and U A B. For the public purposes of maintaining the landscaping along our area interstates and highways. Chief, could you give us a rundown of this?
Yeah, basically, there's just one of those things, the P three public private partnership that we're working with U A B and the county. The county took the lead on this, along with some private, let's just say donors that are, first, it's a phase agreement. The private sector has done all the retention and. Abatement around these on and off ramps right now. So this phase is the private, the partnership right now between the public, between the county and U A B to do the maintenance agreement that is already being done right now. So this allows the city to put our resources elsewhere instead of on the on and off ramps. But this is in conjunction, like I say, with L dot, the county, and U A B to maintain these on and off ramps for the next three years.
Thank you, any questions, Councilor Quinn?
So the, there's been a lot of work done along the cut on the expressway, including the, the old Red Mountain Museum Trail. Is, is that gonna?
That one is different, that's a different project, so this one is mostly on the, the on and off ramps. Now, that project that you're talking about, that's doing the, I think it's an expansion of the, extension of that Red Mountain Runway, so that's, that's a totally different one.
Okay.
So we're only concerned with this agreement on the on and off ramps.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Clark? Yes.
Thank you, I just want to comment that this is really making a really significant difference in the western area and the interchanges where I travel the most. Especially up around Arkadelphia, Bush Boulevard, even, I mean, it's just really, I mean, because we did a lot of landscape installation for the Olympics, like in 95. And it's almost like it wasn't touched again, and you could barely discern that there was something beautiful there. But it has really made a huge difference, and I know that, that the private sector pooled money to do this work. And I just want to say, you know, publicly thank the business community for the Gateways Project. I do think the maintenance is really important because of what happens when you don't maintain it, so it'd be nice to keep this going for a while. One thing I'd like to ask is if there's a, an opportunity for communities to have input. Because I know on the College Hills, the fencing that separates I 20 from the homes at College Hills, now they don't have a sound buffer. Because the vegetation has been removed, so if there can be some. You know, some feedback opportunity for communities who might be, you know, as good as this is for the general public, it might be negatively impacting a few people, so.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think we're amenable to having that conversation with L dot and our staff with B dot to, to try and alleviate that issue.
Thank you very much, I do thank you, Councilor Clark, for bringing up just the beautification of what we're seeing there along that corridor. I know I frequent that Arkadelphia on and off ramp as well as often, and just around the city, what we're seeing, so I am excited to see that. I do just want to ask, and Council Williams, did you have a question? Okay, I did want to ask, so now that we approved this item, does that mean then that we could expect additional services in our neighborhoods? Because now our staff won't be tasked with working in this area?
Yes.
Yeah. What was that for the record now, was it yes?
They're having, they're having, they're having a discussion over there, y'all, keep an eye on them.
Thank you.
He said yes, and he gave them the look. I saw that look.
The horticulture team will still be doing horticulture duties.
Thank you, all right, Council Williams.
So what, so what actually does this, does the maintenance look like? Like are they cutting the grass, I mean, I've seen the, the trees.
So it's a third party vendor that will come in and maintain the actual, the shrubs, the, the actual landscaping and putting hay in, in, you know, beautifying the piece of properties.
But it's not like, so like all these where there's underpasses and there's issues on the underpass?
No, not in that, no.
Nothing to do with that?
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn, did have a follow up.
Yeah, so on that last point, is the underpass issues, is that being handled by another contractor through L dot?
That is being handled by L dot, and we are working with them about the underpass issues, but that is, that is a separate issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I do have a meeting scheduled today with L dot, so we'll continue this conversation with them as well, Council Abbott?
Funny, as we discussed this, more questions come to mind, one thing that I've noticed on this cleanup is that the contractors are cleaning out a lot of homeless encampments that were heretofore hidden. And I just wondered, are we attempting to send those people somewhere or are we just cleaning up the mess that they've left? Or that they live in, you know, because a lot of times they just take junk and it just ends up hidden in the, in the bushes. But if, if these contractors are cleaning up the homeless encampments along with the overgrowth of vegetation? Or what they're doing with all the stuff that's been exposed now?
Let me make sure I'm understanding your question correctly, Counselor, are you asking, when the contractors or staff come in to clean up the encampments? What are we either doing with our homeless population or what are we doing to assist them?
Yeah, well, there's two questions, there's one, are the contractors cleaning up all the stuff that these people have brought in? That's been previously hidden from view because there were, there was vegetation, okay, there's the cleanup. But then are we sending the people somewhere for help or are we just dispersing them to somebody else's neighborhood?
So Chief Mitchell can speak to the contractors, typically we bring in our D P W team to help with the cleaning up of the encampment areas. And then we have a team, you all know many of them, Don Lupo, Ms. Elena Melton, they go in and they work with One Roof, they work with our local homeless community. The folks who service that population to help place them in areas to get them the help if they so desire the help. So the contractors typically don't assist with that piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right, councilors, I believe we're ready for the vote on this one, thank you.
Vote has started.
Dr. Quinn.
Yes.
All right, thank you, councilors, that item passes, next item.
The next item is on page five, item number 12. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a First Amendment to the Master Services Agreement and Statement of Work Number One. Adopted by the council on May 19th, 2021 with Mobility Capital Finance, Inc., a Delaware corporation. To increase the program management fee from $150,000 in year one to $250,000 in year one. For a total amount not to exceed $409,150 in year one for startup and program costs. And to establish a disbursement administration fee for any additional years of 3% of the gross amount of funds distributed at the city's direction through M O C A F. Immediate response card, a payment card program with financial and project management and data services. To support the management and administration of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And to amend the Master Services Agreement and Statement Work Number One. To expand the scope of services to include other federal monies received by the city utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding. The item?
Second, all right, at this time, if we could have someone, I believe I see the individuals. But could we have some more information about this program?
Yes, ma'am, so we have our Director of Community Development, Dr. Megan Venable-Thomas, and also our Deputy Director of Housing, Kelvin Datcher, who will come up and provide overview and answer questions.
Thank you.
Morning, Counselor.
Good morning.
Exciting news today, we're able to add even more capacity to our efforts to help our residents who have been impacted by COVID-19 over the last couple of years. As you guys know, we've received two, two allotments of federal funds for our Emergency Rental Assistance Program to this point. We have been incredibly successful at getting those dollars out, so much so that we have received this third amount of 6.6 million that you guys have already. Supported us in receiving from the federal government. This amended contract allows us to get these dollars out of the door immediately. We've been able to help 2,046 residents of the city of Birmingham, 2,046 families, as a matter of fact. Average is about $5,006 per family. And so we've been able to get that dollars, those dollars out the door so quickly, at a time when other jurisdictions have struggled and had to give money back. We're actually getting additional monies into the city of Birmingham to be able to support our folks even further. We're excited to get those dollars out the door, this amended contract with M O C A F, along with our relationship with Alethia House, has given us the kind of capacity. And the process that has been so smooth that we've been able to get folks into our process and get dollars out the door in a way that has prevented families from getting evicted and utilities from being disconnected. So if you have any further questions, we, we're happy to answer anything that you have at this point.
Thank you, councilors, any questions, Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you if you could talk a little bit about the payment card program? Who gets the payment card and how does that work?
Yes, ma'am, if you remember last year, we had that long, two hour presentation that, you know, was boring to a lot of people.
You can make a shorter presentation this time, that's okay.
I will, it's actually a virtual debit card account that we're setting up, so if you are the applicant, we'd actually set up a debit card account in your name. And we'd route the money through your account, so you're able to see that it's going through there, but the actual resident doesn't touch the dollars. Those dollars are routed through that account and then M O C A F pays the utility on the landlord immediately. We're able to get the dollars out of the city into that virtual account and then M O C A F is able to pay our landlords and our utilities immediately.
Okay, thank you, that was great, short, sweet.
15 seconds, yes, ma'am.
Yes, good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore?
Yes, so would this be available for folks who have not received any assistance previously? Or would people who have, people who have already received some, some assistance be able to also apply for this as well?
Yes, sir, so right now, out of that 6.6 million that we just got, the first bite at the apple is going to be the folks who were approved, but we had exhausted all the funds. Because we were pretty efficient in getting those dollars out the door, so some folks had actually been approved, but we didn't have the money to actually, to pay their landlord, to pay those utilities. Those folks are coming first, and so in a couple of weeks, we will be opening it up for first time applicants to be able to come into that system and get that same kind of benefit. And so their impact to date will still date back to March 13th of 2020, just like everyone else. But first, we're going to handle the folks who have already applied and been approved, and then we will open the doors again to let first time applicants get a chance to, to benefit from the program.
Thank you.
We'll get you that information so you can share with your residents.
Counselor Perthean?
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Datcher was my question, how many applicants will we be able to service with the 6.6 million, do you have a number?
No, ma'am, but if we look at that average of just over 5, 5,000, that, that's a significant number, right? So we just, we just have to look at the actual cost, we don't have a cap on it. So some folks have a lower need than other folks, and some folks have a greater need than other folks, some folks only had utility bills, some folks only had rental, some folks had both. And so we're looking at each individual case, and so Alethia House has been a great partner, and having individual case managers sit and talk with folks is not just a piece of paper. We're having conversations with our residents and explaining to them everything that's possible and every way that we can help them. So it just depends on the individual need of the family.
Okay, can you remind me, how many people did we service the last time?
1,046 families.
Okay, that's a lot, that's a lot, okay, did you see more people needing help with rent or utilities or both?
Both.
Okay, I'm gonna have to sing your praises because this is such a great thing, I don't know if you guys have seen, there was an article saying nationwide, rent is going up to average of $2,000 per month. And that's not even including utilities, so that's a lot of money, and I think it's very important, I'm glad the mayor's office was still taking that charge. Because we're still in the middle of a pandemic epidemic, and there are still people who are affected by this and trying to find jobs, so thank you for this. But I do have just one request, if in the mayor's report, or you can send us an email, the information when the portal opens up, so we can tell our residents about it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, I wasn't here for the two hour presentation, but I really enjoyed learning about M O C A F from their website. Pretty interesting organization, very impressive. Wanted to just ask you, did you put together the machine to make this happen? Or did we contract with Alethia House and they identified the system to, to make it go? Or, I see we contract directly with M O C A F, we contract directly with Alethia House, and we put that together. So you found these people? Or did the city find these people?
Mayor was introduced to, what they call, who is the CEO of, of M O C A F, it's a black owned financial tech company based in New York City. The mayor was introduced to him, maybe either at a Clinton Foundation event or maybe by President Clinton himself. He brought them together, and, and so the mayor, as a matter of fact, we were actually exploring other opportunities to work with M O C A F before the pandemic. And so we already had this information in hand, we wanted to make sure, we pushed as much of the responsibility for this. To, to vendors who do this work on a daily basis outside of City Hall, we approve everything before it moves. But Alethia House, they've always done case management, so we hired Alethia House. M O C A F has always processed financial payments in an expedited way, so we hired M O C A F. So we were able to bring the best of both worlds to our, into the city's partnership, and that's how we benefited our residents so effectively.
Yeah, so anyway, just really want to say, you know, applaud you all for putting this together. And I see some, some other applications for a group like this, especially with like Section 8 homeownership, I'm saying that because our community development director's here. But, you know, aggregating payments to send to a third party can be, I mean, it's something the banks really can't do. And so if a third party like this could do that, I could see how they could be helpful in some other ways, so, thank you.
We hope to come to you all with some additional ways that we're going to use M O C A F to benefit residents.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President, Kelvin, it's so nice to see you in the chambers today, I've missed you greatly.
It's even better to see you, Counselor.
I'm sure it is, let me, I have one quick question, is, so do all of the applicants, do they go through Alethia House? Or is there, when you say the portal, is there, is there a way that Alethia House is bypassed, or is everybody going through Alethia House?
Everyone goes to them.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you all.
Thank you, and I just had one follow up question, again, I do want to provide the accolades for the mayor, for the city, for this opportunity from the federal government. For us to provide these resources for our residents. I know, I'm very happy to see that we're going to go back and extend monies for those who may have qualified, but we had just run out of monies. And so I would like to also ask that you provide us opportunity to lend our voices to making our residents aware that these services, when they will begin. And how they'll be able to go back onto the system and see if they are able to get the help that they need.
Upon approval of counsel, we'll be ready to move and get that right back to you.
And I just had one other question, as part of what Alethia House does, and I know you say they have dedicated, what do you want to call it, resources or caseworkers? Is there any financial literacy or any type of information, or this is just mainly just to help them with the monies, they need to provide the resources?
Right now, we are really focused on that immediate issue of the Shippensburg. That, that is a primary.
Perfect, okay, well, I think that's the best, best way to do this, thank you all very much, councilors, we're ready for the vote then, Madam Clerk, thank you. Thank you all.
Vote has started.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that item passes, and again, we'll be sure to get that information out to our residents as soon as this program opens back up after our vote, thank you very much. We'll be looking forward to that announcement, next item.
Next item is item number 24, it's on page eight. A resolution fixing a sales tax assessment in the. A resolution fixing a sales tax assessment in the amount of $45,978 against KPC Pizza LLC and Chris Vouse, the person responsible for the collection and remittance of taxes business as Marcos Pizza for the periods of May 2018, and November 2018, and February 2019 to December 2019. What's the item?
All right, thank you. This item was removed from consent by Ms. Abbott. Ms. Abbott?
Yes. And this is really a general question. But this item, of course, obviously brought it to mind. This is a sales tax assessment for $45,000. But I wanted to understand how it works, because this is for periods between May of 2018 and December of 2019, which was a long time ago. So how is it that we just now are asking them to pay their taxes when this was done back in the 2018-2019 times period?
Okay, I think I have some. All right, good morning. This original assessment was done in 2019. Counselor Abbott, the issue is this business was not responsive and the business since closed in 2019, but we'll still pursue collection of the taxes. So we're still pursuing collection.
Okay, so the first time we pursued it, it didn't come to the agenda, or it did, and they just ignored us, or?
I don't, I don't think it made it to the agenda at that time. And then the business closed. And then, so what has happened is we've had some turnover and retirement. The one who was managing this file and staff pulled this back up and now.
Okay. I just wondered, because it seems so old that we might not ever see our money. And then, when businesses don't pay their taxes, at what point do we realize that they're not paying their taxes?
Well, we do audits and we also have, we also work through Avenue. But, you know, sometimes these, these are current happen. You do see on occasion where we are after assessments on the.
I mean, obviously, they were selling the pizzas. They just weren't giving us the taxes that they owed. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote.
Started.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item is item number 31 on page 37. Giving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to chiller repair at Highland Golf and Tennis. Item number 32, receiving emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to repairs at City Hall for burst pipe.
Thank you. We do have one question regarding those. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I was trying to get the bottom line on the pipe burst. There's a lot of paper and a lot of totals. Is there a total?
It's, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
There's still an ongoing, trying to get that alleviated. So there's no bottom line figure at the moment, but we'll update the council once that file is closed.
Okay. And do we have some kind of fund for emergencies, or?
Yes, ma'am. It's a deferred maintenance that the council approves every, I think we instituted last year, and it's in the proposed budget this year. So that's the reason behind to have the deferred maintenance fund for things of that nature that pops up that we have a dedicated funding source for certain things like this. So even what Ms. D's read about the chiller at Highland Park, we use deferred maintenance for that to repair that chiller.
Okay. So if we exhaust the deferred maintenance funds, you all just have to find a?
We'll, we'll ask you to give us some PIC funds or your discretionary something. But we manage very well, yeah.
Looks like a good practice to have that.
Thank you.
Given the shape of our facilities.
All right. Thank you very much. We got the digs today. All right, thank you all. Thank you very much. At this time, counselors, I would like to ask for your comments that you may be bringing to us from each of your districts. And I'll start with you, Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. Spring Lake Neighborhood will meet this Thursday, June 2nd at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Echo Highlands Neighborhood will meet this Thursday also at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And the East Pinson Valley Community Meeting will be held this Saturday at 9:00 AM, also via Zoom. And so definitely want to make sure everybody takes some time to plug into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by thanking the mayor, Chief Thurman, the North Precinct Tactical, and Detective Drake. They, my car was liberated from the Smithfield Library while I was attending a meeting. And so those cameras do work. That's all I got to say. Because they were able to quickly recover my vehicle. And, you know, it may.
Parroted.
Yeah, it was really, I was wondering if I was losing my mind. I was like, is my car gone? So that was a new one in the life experiences, I have to say. There are no neighborhood meetings in District 8 this week. This Saturday, our Be Litter Free effort is teaming up with the Ensley Community President, George McCall, and the True Love Church of Ensley to tackle the gateways, some of these same gateways that we were talking about maintaining the vegetation on. So True Love is right there at that Avenue I interchange. And so they like adopting that in the Ensley Avenue interchange. So we're, we're going to try to drive some more volunteers out to help them. This starts on Saturday, June 4th at 8:00 AM. We'll meet at True Love where they'll be serving breakfast. And then the cleanup will start at 8:30. So please come out and join us. The Much Beloved Fishing Rodeo is back on June 11th at Eastlake Park from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Be real cool, R-E-E-L, and come out for this fun family tradition. And after the fishing rodeo, you can come out to Crossplex to join the Five Points West Community for a fun day. This is a community-wide fun day featuring all of the five, put on by all of the neighborhoods comprising the Five Points West Community. It'll be free fun, including music, games, food, and vendors. And, you know, it's family fun, so all ages are welcome. Also note that the Birmingham Botanical Gardens Children's Summer Camps are gearing up. These half-day camps for kids from kindergarten through grade six cover a range of topics from "It's a Buggy World" to "Art in Nature." To learn more, you can go to their website to sign up at www.bbgardens.org. And I do have some announcements on behalf of District 9 in Counselor Tate's absence. So do you want to come back to me for that? Okay. Okay, so for District 9, the Assipco Finley Neighborhood will meet this evening at 5:00 PM via conference call. The dial-in information is area code 952-206-4918. And the access code is 223418. Also, the Sherman Heights Neighborhood will meet Monday, June 6th at 6:00 PM via conference call. And that dial-in number is 952-206-4918. And the access code is 2, that's the same, that's the same information, 223418. If you, if you're not sure about it, you may want to call the counselor's office to, if this doesn't work. Central Pratt Neighborhood will meet on Monday, June 6th at 6:00 PM in person at House Sanford Recreation Center. That's located at 320 Avenue D in Pratt City. You can also catch the meeting remotely via conference call by dialing area code 7207409732. And the access code is 3488808. The next public safety meeting will be on Tuesday, June 14th at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, June 9th by 1:00 PM. And finally, the historic Old Sardis Baptist Church will commemorate the 66th anniversary of the formation of the Alabama Christian Movement for Human Rights on Sunday, June 5th, 2022. That's at 10:30 AM. And the guest speaker who will be featured for this event is the Reverend Cornell Wesley. How about that? He's our very own Director of the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity for the City of Birmingham. He's a member of the South Illaton Baptist Church with affiliations with Greater, affiliated with Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. A special honor will be bestowed upon Reverend Calvin W. Wood Sr. as the only surviving organizer in the formation of the Alabama Christian Movement for Human Rights. So please plan to attend. Again, that's at the Old Sardis Baptist Church, which is located at 1240 Fourth Street North in the Enon Ridge Neighborhood in District 9. That is Birmingham, Alabama 35204, where Reverend Camera J. Blue is the pastor. And these were, this concludes the District 9 announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Moore?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you. Hope everybody had a wonderful Memorial Day weekend and enjoyed time with your family and got plenty of good rest. And, yeah, I know we don't have any neighborhood associations taking place this week, but on Monday, we have Maple Grove Neighborhood Association, Brummitt Heights, Collegeville, and Zion City taking place at 6:00 PM on Monday. And so if you would like to get that information, make sure that you check out the landing page so that you can find out the links and phone conference numbers to attend. Also want to give a huge shout out and thank you to District Court Judge Martha Reeves Cook for coming by Woodlawn High School last week. Got a chance to talk to the senior class about landlord tenant rights. Talking to them about, you know, some of the things that they need to be on the lookout for before signing any agreements. And I think it's just, you know, useful information. It's something that I, you know, definitely wish somebody would have talked to me about. But the main thing that I think students were able to walk away with is, you know, just the importance of reading things before you sign it, reading things before you sign it. And so definitely thankful for her coming out and having that conversation. Also want to make sure that people know about the Woodlawn Street Market that's taking place June the 11th on Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So it's actually going to be a night market. So, yeah, if you would like to come out, support some, some great entrepreneurs, some great businesses, and just have a good time, it's going to be a great event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I certainly hope everyone had a safe Memorial Day. I spent a lot of time thinking about all the people who have lost their lives in the multiplicity of wars that we seem to get ourselves involved in. You know, when I was a child, World War II was the war that everyone thought about. And now almost all of the World War II people are gone. But we've had so many other wars where we've lost our friends and relatives and neighbors. And, you know, so Memorial Day is a, it's a nice holiday, but it's not exactly one you celebrate. You know, you celebrate the people who are missing, but they're still missing. So it was a contemplative Memorial Day for me. But the World Games are coming, and we have to be ready. And I'm encouraging all of the citizens who are not paying attention to those street closures that are coming up to please pay attention, because the day you try to go to work, or school, or wherever you're going, and your route is blocked, you have got to have an alternate route. And that alternate route is almost undoubtedly going to take you more time than you had planned. So I just hope that everyone will make their plans ahead of time. I know I have, I have mapped out two possible routes that I can use to get out of my neighborhood now. In case, you know, something goes wrong with one, I have another one. The next planning and zoning meeting will be Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. The next neighborhood association meeting for District 3 is Monday, June 6th, and that is the Glen Iris Neighborhood Association meeting that occurs at 6:30 PM. And we're still Zooming. So it's a lot safer that way. So, thank you, Madam President. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by acknowledging President Bondery Lyons of the Fountain Heights Neighborhood. She has, she's here this morning. I think she has some issues. She wants to follow up with the administration about some, some down trees in a couple of locations. So please connect with the mayor's office when we adjourn the meeting. Before I give my announcement, I have a, some, some folks have reached out to me concerning transportation relative to the World Games. And the concern is that the, the number of vehicles that are being provided to work the circulators from the hub to the different spots. So I'd like to follow up with the appropriate contact person to just inquire to how we're scaling that. I mean, to date, the largest event in, in the city of Birmingham is, I think, the classic. And I just want to be sure that we're, you know, providing adequate levels of transportation, you know, appropriate to the scale of the event. You guys look like you want to comment, so I'm going to let.
It's really, it's really a couple of things, because our incident commanders have been very much on top of this, Chief Moore and Chief Mitchell. But I think some information has been shared with the council that does not necess, it puts you on alarm unnecessarily. So that's the reason why I was looking to Chief Mitchell, but we'll go ahead. Go ahead, Chief.
No, it's, and I don't want to discuss it publicly, but I know me and you have a meeting at 11:30 that we can discuss about it. And we can give you an update on.
Okay, all right. I mean, it wouldn't be the first time that I've gotten inaccurate information from a third party.
We want to provide you with accurate information.
Thank you.
Well, provide it, please, to all of us, even if you're talking to him like verbally. Provide it to the rest of us so we know what you're talking about.
Let's just say we have an adequate number of buses.
Right.
Okay. All right. Smithfield Neighborhood has a cleanup on Saturday, June 11th at 9:00 AM, starting at Friendly Baptist Church located at 926 Street North. If you would like to participate or need additional information, please contact my office at 205-254-2679. And finally, we have two board appointments, two openings for board appointments. The first is the Birmingham Parking Authority Board. You must be a Birmingham resident or a city of Birmingham resident. And secondly, the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, which you must be a resident of Jefferson County to qualify for that position. Please email your resume and interest to maisha.hutchinson@maisha.hutchinson@birminghamal.gov or myself by Monday, June 20th, 2022. Thank you. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday, June the 2nd at 6:30. Also wanted to thank you, Counselor Clark, for talking about the fishing rodeo, which is June the 11th from 8:00 to 1:00 at Eastlake Park. On Friday, June the 10th, prior to the fishing rodeo, we're going to partner with the USFL Alabama Bass Masters to teach our kids both football and fishing techniques at 2:00. So if you would like to have your kids be a part of this, please RSVP a spot with India Bailey at 205-254-2679. Bailey at 205-254-2348 or 205-215-3660. I'll give my office phone number one more time. That's 205-254-2348. And shout out to India and Mabel who have been working tirelessly to set this up with Sean A. I know they've been working overtime, so thank you all very much for everything. But seriously, I think that it'll be awesome to have, if, if you have young children that are in elementary school and older, so not college, not college age, but elementary school through high school, come out with the USFL at 2:00 on the 10th, which is Friday, the day before the Fishing Rodeo, to meet them and some anglers from Bass Masters to have a little quick skills camp for, for the next day.
Thank you. Councilor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give a early congratulations to the class of 2022. Our Birmingham Public School students will be graduating this Thursday and Friday, including my niece, so I'm very happy for her. We will be moving her into USA this weekend because she's playing basketball for USA. So, she's going to summer camp. So, congratulations to them. We have kicked off our pop-up farmers market that is every second Saturday of the month. Next month, it will be June 11th from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Bethesda Family Life Center across from Moreton Conquerors Faith Church. The physical address is 1721 Steve Green Drive, Birmingham, Alabama 35211. Also, as a reminder, the Railroad Park is having the exercise classes through the week starting at 6:00 PM. And this will last from now until October 31st. Um, let's see. Monday through Friday during the summer at the Tidusville Library, they will collaborate with the Community Food Bank to provide children with free, healthy meals. The Kids Cafe Program is open to all kids ages 18 and younger. The program will be held starting this Monday, June 6th and go through the week of August 1st. Lunch will be from 11:00 to noon and snacks will be from 4:00 to 5:00. Also, I will be having a walk with your counselor. Thank you, Councilor Clark. She gave me the idea, where we will walk and talk and just get to know me promoting healthy exercise. So, next week, June 8th, we will be at Memorial Park Walking Trail from 6:00 to 7:00. And then, June 9th at the West End Walking Trail from 6:00 to 7:00. Also, I will, I will be having a chat with the Five Point South Business District to further develop action plans with the neighborhood. Next Wednesday, June 8th and Wednesday, June 15th from 7:30 to 8:30 AM at the Filter Coffee Poller, which is at 1927 11th Avenue South. And then, lastly, the next Budget and Finance Meeting will be Monday, June 13th at 3:30 PM. Submissions are due Wednesday, June 8th by noon. Submissions received afternoon will, will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Agenda. Email submissions to Laquita Wilson and AJ. Also, just a reminder, the next budget, well, the budget hearings will be this Monday at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. We will have an option for you if you don't feel comfortable coming in person. And then, the second one will be Thursday, June 16th at 5:30 PM. And also, the next PIC meeting will be Tuesday, June 7th at 2:00 PM, and submissions are due Wednesday, June 1st. Also, councilors, I know only one councilor has submitted budget questions, but if you guys have any, please submit them by the end of today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Announcements for District 7. The District 7 Chat and Chew, our quarterly Chat and Chew with neighborhood offices, officers will be held this Friday, June 3rd. We'll have a cleanup in D7 on Saturday, June 4th at 10:00 AM. It's our cleanup day in D7, so we'll be meeting at the Winona High School parking lot. We do have neighborhood meetings that are scheduled. Our first one for the month of June will be Friday, June 3rd. That's the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association. And we meet in the Powderly Library at 4:00 PM. We have two neighborhood meetings on Monday, June 6th. That's the Powderly Neighborhood Association. They meet by Zoom and that is 831-6889-0244. And the passcode is V6XPP6. And the Priscilla Heights Neighborhood Association, they'll be meeting in the Mirador Center at 3:00 PM. Also, for District 7 residents, we do have the UAB Live Health Smart. Their fresh fruit will be, and mobile market will be set up Tuesday from, that's today actually, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Powderly Library. And that's at Wiggins Park at 3301 Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Also, want to remind you of, of a blood drive that I announced last week. And this is being hosted by the Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And it will be at the First United Missionary Baptist Church in Wyllam. And that is on Sunday, June 12th from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. And that's at 1201 Seattle Street. That's in Wyllam. And there will also be a community health fair with healthcare professionals will be available at that time. We want to thank our officers who are on duty today. Cedric Pinkert from City Hall, Robert Johnson from the South Precinct, and Bruce Carpenter from the South Precinct. We appreciate you being on duty to keep things safe and in order for us. At this time, councilors.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. North Tidusville Neighborhood will have their neighborhood meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Memorial Park Rec Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Want to thank everyone for attendance today. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
All of you, let us know about saying aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.